So seeing a quorum of the Select Board present, I call the meeting of the Select Board for Wednesday, April 24th, 2024, at 8:30 to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance standing if you are able to. Thank you.
... to the flag.
I represent the states of America and to your people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue, I do want to mention that, or read a statement in accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extend the Governor's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the ultimate law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, until March 31st, 2025. This meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. In person, we have the Vice Chair, Scott Carrera, the Select Board Member, Lou Gieto, and Select Board Member, Joe McCrisky, and remotely participating is Select Board Member, Deborah Roberts. When we met yesterday to continue our public hearings, we voted on times that were different than what are on this agenda. We voted for the first public hearing to take place at 8:55 and the second to begin at 9:05. So in the interim, we're going to move some business around. I would actually like to start by, even though we don't have a Select Board comments and Town Manager comments on the agenda, I would like to invite members of the Select Board and the Town Manager to share any comments they may have. Would anybody like to share anything? Mr. Gieto, you have the floor.
I'd like to give sort of an update on the Townwide Beautification Day, which is going to be this Saturday from 8 o'clock until noon. There are over 200 volunteers who've signed up. And if you haven't signed up, you can walk around your neighborhood with a bag or something like that and pick things up and put them in the trash. And when the trash people come around, you can put that out as well. So there's a lot of interest. Over a dozen businesses have donated over $7,200. The businesses are Walnut Tree Services, Maupin Company, Ming Do, Riley Brothers, Hershey Excavating, Abington Bank, Dana Barris Basketball, Sam's Getty Station, the Stoughton Cooperative Bank, Polio Garden Center, Bussards Incorporated. And Bussards is going to, in addition to donating money, they have about 26 people who are going out on Tuesday, not this next Saturday, but the following Tuesday, to pick up on K Way and in the area around there, where they are, Sim Screen Printing and CW Welsh Fish and Game. I would like to recognize the fact that the DPW had Paul Jaffoon and April Hand were principal workers in putting this together in the Recreation Department, Matt Gushon and Molly Reed, Pam McCarthy from the Economic Development Director, Jeff Pickett from the School Department, and Eric Coleman dropped by and gave a lot of good advice as well. We have 11 team leaders, some of whom didn't want to be mentioned, so I won't mention their names, that helped. And other people helping to get the word out were the Superintendent of Schools, Joe Beeta, and Anya Zowalnik from SMAC. And that was very helpful as well. So after the pickup, the cleanup, there's going to be a cookout at the Council on Aging at 110 Rockland Street. So just wanted to say thank you for all the people that have done all the work so far and people that have signed up to go out and do things. And it looks like it might be a good day. But rain or shine, it's going to go on. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Gieto. Are there any other members of the Select Board who would like to take a moment to make any comments? Okay. Mr. Coulter, is there anything you'd like to say?
One comment, Mr. Chairman. As the members recall during the budget process, one of the unknown pieces of data we didn't have at the time is whether the state would reimburse the town of Stoughton for its lost occupancy tax in the sedestor in Ramada Inn that's being used now for shelter. I was informed earlier in the week by the Lieutenant Governor that in fact, we are being reimbursed 100% of the last revenue. And as it would have it, today, the first payment showed up. So that addresses a major doughnut hole in the budget. And I'm really thankful to the administration that they would keep us whole in that point. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so the next order of business will be item number five. This is the Page Street discontinuance amendment. As background, the town petitioned the Norfolk County Commissioners to discontinue a portion of Page Street. The county is in the process of performing a detailed review of the plans and all supporting documentation. And as noted, that the petition will need an amendment to convert a portion of the discontinued county way into a townway, since the public will have access to those areas. Mr. Tisdale is here to help us understand what's going on and also provide us with insight in what he's looking for us to do. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cavey. Congratulations on the chairmanship.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the vice chairmanship, Mr. Carrera. Nothing to add for the Town Manager, but you're doing a great job. I know. She thought it was funny. Nobody laughs at my jokes. Yeah, it must be, right? Exactly. So this, Steve Cavey said it well. Background, just to refresh the board, there is a petition by the Board submitted to the Norfolk County Commissioners to discontinue a portion of old Page Street. That's well under its way. They're going through, they're working out the details. The vote on that should be happening very soon. There's one small detail that needs to get resolved. So we're asking the Board to amend the original petition. If you can, if you can kind of think about it, you have, you have the subdivision road going into the new project, and you've got our Page Street that everybody travels on every day. And then you have a discontinued road that's going to be in the middle. What happens to discontinued roads? Half the road goes to the property on one side and half goes to the property on the other side. The property on the other side is the town of Stoughton. It's a right-of-way. So what this would create is a parcel of land to the town of Stoughton, which we actually want it to be a way, right? So people can travel through. So instead of a town of Stoughton parcel, we want it to be a town of Stoughton way. And that's exactly what we're asking for you in your requested action here. And by the way, this is, this is a really good format. I like this. It clarifies what we're really asking you for in our, in our, in our presentations. So exactly what's written here, the requested action, is exactly what we're asking your Board for.
Perfect. I'll ask, do any members of the Select Board have any questions? Mr. McCrisky.
Mr. Chairman, not a question, but a comment. This project, as many of you know, is probably the biggest land deal we've got to see in the past 50 years. And which is resulting, just from a tax on the building alone, will add 2.3 to 2.7 million dollars in new revenue. That doesn't tax the schools, doesn't tax public safety. So that's right into the budget, you know? And that is a great thing for those of us who've mentioned, you know, in years past, that we need to bring in new revenues so that we don't have to keep going to the taxpayers and putting it on their backs. This is a major positive thing for the town. It really is. And depending on the uses, when it's personal property, conveyor systems, because this will be warehousing, the truck traffic goes on Page Street. It doesn't go on our Turnpike Street. It protects the neighborhood. And the personal property tax could, you know, in a best case scenario, you know, bring us in another $2 million, you know, in personal property tax for conveyor systems, forklifts, and, you know, whatever automated systems they have in those. Some of them, you know, are automatic picking stations where it's all done, you know, with automation. And that's also taxable property. So this could be, you know, one of the biggest influxes of tax dollars into the town that doesn't impact, you know, the infrastructure. So it's, and I would be remiss, I have been at every step with the developers. But Mark and his staff and the Town Resources, Town Manager, everybody has really stepped up to the plate and supported this project, worked hard on it, helped the developer when it needed to be helped. And, you know, it's going to be a good project. So through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mark, the Town Manager, you know, on behalf of the staff that's here, this is one that everybody in the town that pays taxes should be very happy with what's going on, so.
Mr. Carrera.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Joe. Joe, make sure everybody knows that it's not like a one-time payment. This is stuff that will happen every year. So it's not like, just because they're building it, we're going to get this. This will be like ongoing revenue.
It's their property tax. The same way we pay our yearly property taxes, this building pays 2.3 to 2.7 million dollars in property tax. And I didn't mention, you know, the local vendors. This developer has already reached out to several local construction companies, landscaping companies, service providers. So we're going to be putting people to work, not only when it's up and built, but during the construction process. So they're already looking to do whatever they can to put electricians, plumbers, so forth, you know, interior build-outs, things like that, you know, whatever they can, they're going to try to put Stoughton businesses to work. So it's, it's a very, very, and those of us that have been around for a little while, you know, Scott and I, Lou, I mean, these, these are the projects that you really look forward to having come in your town because, you know, the positive results are all over the place. The businesses that they're going to be sponsoring, you know, there'll be, you know, there's a mobile fueling company that goes out, any trucks that are on the site. But it's going to be great. Like I said, they're, they're planning on, you know, 300 jobs. But, you know, we can't guarantee, as we found out with Amazon, when they came to town, we were promised a lot of jobs. But, you know, it won't be all Stoughton residents, but they have said that they will give Stoughton residents a preference. So that's, that's, you know, this project is just hitting every positive note that it can. So it's great.
It's the gift that keeps on giving.
That's right. Gift that keeps on giving.
Excellent. Any other questions? Ms. Roberts, I just want to make sure that we don't miss you. You're good?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, no questions. I'm all in favor of this. And if you need a motion at this time, so made.
Thank you very much, Ms. Roberts. So given that there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion.
Deborah made it. Deborah, do you want me to read it for you?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Apologies, my hearing is not very good.
Mr. Chairman, this, this would be Deborah Roberts's motion, which it's to amend, the motion is to amend the original submitted petition requesting that portion of the area of discontinuance depicted as discontinued parcel A, containing 6,751 square feet, shall be discontinued as a county highway, and thereafter only this section of the way, Page Street, so discontinued, shall be a townway.
Okay, that's the motion made by Ms. Roberts. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gieto. And we will go alphabetically, so I don't miss anybody again. Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gieto?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So this passes unanimously. The next order of business is item number...
Thank you very much.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Mark.
There's a letter you need to sign tonight, Steve.
You need something to sign?
There is a letter in the package. Yeah.
Thank you very much. So the next item will be number six, which, this is the consent agenda. I've made an effort to make sure that the items in here were non-controversial. But if there's something that anybody would like to pull, let me know. I'm going to just start by reading the consent agenda items. Consent agenda, item A is approval of open session minutes, meetings for March 19th, 2024, March 27th, 2024, and April 10th, 2024. Item B is a road race application, July 4th parade from the Stone Recreation Department. Item C is the road race application for June 23rd, 2024, from St. John's Philharmonic Society, 845 Washington Street. Item D is application for one-day alcohol beverage license, June 22nd, 2024, also from the St. John's Philharmonic Society, 845 Washington Street. And item E is the electronic billboard request for use application. This is from the Stone Equal Opportunity Committee. Are there any items that any members of the Board would like to pull?
Mr. Chairman, I will not be taking part. I will abstain from March 19th and March 27th, but I will be voting on April 10th.
Okay. So in order to keep this clean, I'm going to pull item A, and we'll, we'll vote on these minutes separately.
All right.
And so are there any other items that people would like to pull? I see none. So for the consent, consent agenda, item A, but only April 10th, 2024. Item B, road race application from the Recreation Department. Item C, road race application from St. John's Philharmonic. Item D, application for one-day alcohol license. And item E, the electronic billboard request from the Stone Equal Opportunity Committee. Is there a motion to, to accept the consent agenda, to approve it? That motion was made by Scott Carrera. Is there a second?
Deborah, second.
Seconded, thank you. I got to start wearing, I think, like some sort of thing. Because I'm sorry, Deborah, I wasn't able to hear you. So it's, it was, the motion was made by Mr. Carrera, seconded by Ms. Roberts. All in favor, Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gieto?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. On the consent agenda, item A, the approval of minutes for March 19th and March, 2024, and March 27th, 2024.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve is made by Mr. Gieto. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McCrisky. All in favor, Mr. Carrera?
I abstain, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gieto?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That is four yeses and one abstention from Mr. Carrera. We still have about five minutes before our first public hearing, so I'm going to take up item number four. This is a, I'll just read it directly from here. The Old Colony Elder Services is inviting the Select Board to nominate a representative to the OCES Board. Ellen Lash, who we have joining us tonight, has been on the board for the past year and has expressed an interest in continuing on the board. And they're requesting that we renominate Ellen Lash as the town of Stoughton representative for the OCES. Since we have the nominee here, or the presumptive nominee, Ms. Lash, if you'd like to say a couple of words, you're more than welcome to.
Oh, sure. I'm very happy to continue on the OCES Board. I'm also on the Board of the Stoughton Council on Aging. And I think it's been really valuable to have communication between the two boards.
Thank you very much for your service to the town and to the OCES. So I want to entertain a motion to, to approve this nomination or to nominate Ellen Lash.
So made. Second.
The motion was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gieto?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I vote yes as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Lash. And hopefully we'll see you again next year.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Be well. Thank you so much. Okay, we have about three minutes until we're able to pick up the, the public hearings. And I think that item three might require a little bit more discussion. So if it's, if you all don't mind, I'm going to just call for a three-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 8:55. I'd to reconvene the meeting of the Select Board for Wednesday, April 24th.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just thank you for one thing that...
Sure. You have the floor, Mr. Gieto.
That has happened. You put together an executive summary of the Select Board meeting that, that anybody who pulls the agenda down and looks at it can find out, in fact, what's going on without reading 150 pages of material. So thank you very much. I think this is a very good thing that happened.
I appreciate it. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda are a number of public hearings that we have. We have, the first one is, was, it's listed here on the agenda as 8:35. Yesterday, we took a vote to continue this until 8:55. And this is amendment, change of hours to common vehicle license, all alcohol entertainment license, application for LaStalla, Osteria, and Bar, 559 Washington Street. There's an item B, which is listed here as 8:45, but we took a vote yesterday to continue it until 9:05. This is an application for a common vehicle license for Super Slice Management LLC, doing business as Pizonis at 1261 Park Street. And another public hearing is an application, this is listed as 9 o'clock, application for one-day alcohol beverage license for May 5th, 2024, Basico LLC, 837 Washington Street. We are lucky to have a member of the Board who has extensive experience with public hearings. I'd like to take advantage of that. Mr. Carrera, our Vice Chair, Mr. Carrera, has been on the zoning board of appeals and has also been on the finance committee, as well as the Select Board, numerous times over many decades, and has a lot of experience with public hearings. And so for the sake of this public hearing, I'd like to extend him the opportunity to be acting chair. All comments and questions should be directed towards him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Cavey. This is how we'll handle the public hearings, is the procedure will be, on this one, where it's a continuance, we'll take a motion to continue and open the public hearing. And we will bring the applicants up. The applicants will be asked to be seated. They will tell us what, what they're proposing. And then after the presentation, I will go to all the members of the Board for their questions. And then after all the members have spoken, we'll go into the audience to get some questions from them, concerns. And then after that, if the Board, I'll go through again and ask if they have anything else, any concerns that popped up during comments from the public, we'll address that. At that time, if there's nothing, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing, and then we'll discuss whether to approve, deny, or put anything else on it. That's how it'll go. Nobody will speak out. Nobody will stand up. Nobody will interrupt any other member when they're talking. If that happens, I will, I will ignore the person and listen to the other person. So that's how we're going to handle it. So everybody gets to hear everything properly, and nobody will be talking over each other. So thank you for that. I, this time, I entertain a motion to reopen the hearing for LaStalla, Osteria, Bar. If there's somebody here that would, that's, that's part of that, please come to, up to the, to the table.
I move that we continue the hearing.
Sorry, go ahead.
Motion to open the public hearing?
I have a motion to open the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Deborah Roberts. Mr. McCrisky made the motion. Deborah seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, roll call, sorry. Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
I say aye.
Yes.
Cavey? Mr. Gieto?
Yes.
And Deborah?
Aye.
So we have the five of the motions. The hearing is now open. The floor is yours, sir. And press that button on and talk close to the microphone and tell us.
Yes, I am Frederick Rudnicki, owner of LaStalla, Osteria, and Bar. And we're looking to extend...
Bring that a little bit.
Extend the liquor license.
That's good. Thank you.
To open the liquor license earlier. We have it right now from 12 to 1. Planning to do breakfast. And we're looking to extend that to, you know, have hopefully not too many drinks, but, you know, whoever wants, you know, Bloody Mary or anything like that, we'd be able to accommodate them. We're, we've been right now in business for, I believe, three years. And we, you know, run a clean restaurant. And, you know, hoping to expand the breakfast so that we'll bring us, and lunch, to, to bring us, hopefully, a little more business.
I'm going to read, Mr. Cavey, the, the information that came from the licensing. And I've reviewed all, all the stuff that came in, and the business contact information, an application, the Sunday Entertainment License, corporate vote, advertising, and a butt of notifications. From our offices, we have, the fire department has approved it. The police department has no objections. The Board of Health approved with restrictions, one, which is not to exceed 156 interior seats. Two, monthly grease trap pumpings. Do you have this information?
That's, that's been changed with the Board of Health to every three months.
Every three months?
Actually, I'm sorry, every four months, three times a year.
That would be six months.
With, no, every, every four months, so three times.
That's quarterly, then?
Yeah.
Okay. At least two food safety managers on staff per Board of Health regulations. Have you fulfilled that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we sent that in to the Board of Health.
We have the, the gallonage, which is 1,000-gallon approved tank that's in the ground. Building and zoning, this approved. Treasurer's office, no objections. And the water department has approved it. So that's everything. Now I'll open it up to any members. Mr. Gieto, do you have any comments, sir? I don't have any questions. I have comments.
Go ahead, sure.
But that would be, I presume, later. I have no questions.
Right.
I have comments.
You can.
Do you want me to comment?
Sure. Yep, absolutely.
Well, I, I thought that the, when, when the license, the licensee wanted to serve breakfast, it was 7:00 AM to 1:00. I'm not sure that I, and I think that that's a good thing. I'm not really sure about serving liquor and having entertainment from 7:00 AM to 11:00, or whatever the time period is. And so that's, that's where I am on, on that. Okay.
Mr. Cavey? I'll make a couple of comments. I, I go to your restaurant often. I enjoy it. The food's excellent. If anybody hasn't had a chance to go there, you really have to do it. I recommend the errand chini, the rice balls, which are fabulous, absolutely fabulous. They're, the other thing, and if you, this is only if you like, if you like lemons, the Simply Stalla is my favorite drink of all time. I love this place. But I think you might know where I'm going with this, my vote. But I, I appreciate this. 7 o'clock is a bit early, but I imagine this is like a Mother's Day, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Basically, I mean, you know, even if we're open for breakfast, I'm sure that nobody's really going to be drinking anything at 7 o'clock. And, you know, and I don't intend to push it at 7 o'clock either, you know? So.
Yeah.
And far as entertainment... And far as entertainment, that will only be on certain occasions, not every, every breakfast, you know, day. You know, like, you know, say, Mother's Day or something like that, then we would have, and it wouldn't be at seven in the morning. It would, it would be, you know, maybe eleven, and, you know, later in the morning. But, you know, it's, I just didn't want to have a restriction, you know, right now to say, okay, it's going to be eleven. If, if we want to have it at ten now, we can't have it, you know what I mean? So that's, that's the, why we put it at that time.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The other statement is that your ravioli are also my favorites. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm all done.
All set?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Roberts, do you have any, any questions or comments? Deborah?
Yes, I have, I do have a couple of questions, and I have, I've visited and eaten at the restaurant. The food is so delicious. So for the breakfast, give us an idea, what type of things are you going to serve? Like omelets, or are just your traditional eggs and bacon and toast, or?
Well, omelets, waffles, pancakes, and, you know, just traditional eggs, toast, and, and home fries.
That's really good.
We have a nice, a nice, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And then, for the alcoholic beverages, you said, like Bloody Marys or Mimosas?
Yeah, Mimosas and Bloody Marys, yes.
Typical drinks that you have with your breakfast meal.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds really nice. I'm glad you found this, to expand it. And thanks for coming before us. I'm in favor of it, so.
Well, thank you.
That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Deborah. Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. One thing I did, just take a quick look up, chapter 138 does not allow us to allow a license to be issued earlier than eight AM. So eight AM is the earliest we can go. And it does allow us to go longer in the morning hours, and, but you're only asking for one o'clock?
Yeah.
One AM.
One, one AM, what it is now, yes.
Yeah. Because I would just re- remind my colleagues that a while back, we had quite a push of people that were coming in for two o'clock licenses, and there was a policy that we would issue no licenses beyond one AM. And that was supposed to be shut down. Last drink was served at 12:30, bar cleared by one, and everybody out. So, you know, that's, we have to stick with that as well, because if we were to do anything beyond that, we're going to have an influx of people coming back in. And surrounding towns have one o'clock licenses, so what that does is bring the last call into Stoughton with people that have been drinking somewhere else, and they come over here, and that's when things can happen. So I just want to remind us on, on that one. But been in your restaurant as well, and I guess if I were to mention the things I had, we can cover the menu, you know? But it's definitely a crowning jewel in, in Stoughton's crown for dining.
Thank you very much.
And, you know, we're, we're lucky, we have a couple of great restaurants in this town, and we're getting to the point now where, no matter what you're looking for, fine dining or just casual dining, you're right over the Brockton line. But welcome to Stoughton.
Thanks.
And scallops were awesome. And then they don't, let's just let it, look at Phantom Gourmet. If you want to see, log on to Phantom Gourmet. Look at the great businesses coming to Stoughton. So thank you to you and your family.
Thank you. I don't have anything to say. They've said enough.
You haven't been there?
What's that?
You haven't been there? Well, hey.
Nope, not yet. Oh, you're welcome.
Could have saved some time if we put the menu in the packet.
Unfortunately, I'm a little biased, because I'm Sicilian and I cook at home. I'm the one who cooks. So I, I kind of spoil my wife and everybody who comes in.
I could use extra, I could use extra help in the kitchen.
Celebrity chef.
Right now, I'll open it up to the public, and, yes, Cynthia, go ahead.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. I'm in favor of this, particularly since two local breakfast places, Deeg's and Maxi's Deli, have closed down. So we need a fresh place for breakfast and lunch. While I don't imbibe, I know I have relatives, especially aunts, who enjoy some beverages with their breakfast other than orange juice. And I wish you good luck.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to comment?
Mr. Chair, there's nobody online whose comments-
Nobody either? Okay. So is there any other comments from the board before we ask for the vote to close the hearing? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, Tom, go ahead.
Would, would you, it require an amendment to make it eight o'clock pursuant to the statute?
When we go to vote, absolutely, Mr. McCrisky's has to be entered, and if Mr. Gito wants to put his in, concern in, it could be part of the motion, or, or whatever, whoever makes it, but we'll go from there.
Right.
So I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So made.
Second.
Okay, I'll go around. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's five-oh to close, and I'm open for a motion to approve, or what you want to do. Mr. McCrisky?
Make a motion, we approve the license request with the corrective action of no earlier than eight AM, and no later than one AM for the license.
Second. I have a second. Discussion on the motion.
Could you repeat that, Joe?
Yes, in accordance with chapter 138 Massachusetts liquor laws, that the license is, is presented to them no earlier than an eight AM start, and no later than a one AM start. I, I mean, closing. Because that's the only, that's the Mass General laws.
Eight AM, did you say?
Yes, eight AM, they'll open for their breakfast, and they'll continue until one AM in the morning. And that's, you know, after their dinner. The last drink is served at 12:30. Everything has to be off the table by one AM, in accordance with state statute.
I would like to ask if we could break the motion into the food, and the entertainment, and the liquor.
So we have three licenses. We have entertainment, liquor, and common vicular. Do you want to have three separate votes?
I would like at least two. I would like the food, and then the liquor and the, and the entertainment could be a second.
Okay. I'll second that.
This, but if I can question?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
This is just a change of hours on each of the licenses, so it's one vote to change them. I mean, it's, they all play off each other. So I don't know what the benefit of having additional votes with one vote-
That, that's fine, if you want to have one vote, that's, that's dandy.
Okay, I just don't know what the purpose, if, if there's a reason that I'm unaware of, Lou, I'm open ears.
Well, I would vote yes on one part of it, no on the other. That's all I'm-
Oh, okay.
Hang on. Are you done?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Sure. So the reason why I feel like it might be appropriate to break this vote up is that you might want to start serving breakfast at seven o'clock, but you can't start selling, serving alcohol until eight o'clock. So that would give you an hour to be open, selling breakfast, and then you can sell alcohol at eight.
Okay, okay. That's what I was looking for. What was the reason? So, yeah, that's fine. Okay.
So the, so there's a, a motion by Mr. Gito. I will second it to, to have two separate motions. One is the common vicular license, and the other one is the all-alcohol license and the entertainment license.
Okay. That's, that's why I asked what, a question.
After we vote this, the only thing we'll have to do is maybe talk to Brian Winner to see that we did this properly, even like Joe said, it's just asking for hour change, but we're sort of amending things to fit, which I understand. I think this gentleman has stated to us that he won't be having a band at eight in the morning, that it'd be Mother's Day, Father's Day, you know, days like that, that-
I just want to have that option, doesn't mean that I'm going to have it, but, you know, if, if there is like certain occasions, I would, you know, I would have, just, I'm not a, not a band, I mean like a band, but just like a one-piece maybe, you know, just for entertainment, that's all. One, two-piece.
For background noise.
Yeah, yeah.
So I understand where Mr. Gito's coming from, and like Joe said, that eight o'clock would be the start for the liquor, and-
Of course, yeah.
And that if you were going to open, say, at seven to serve breakfast, then that wouldn't start, and I would, sure, you would be in control of that.
Yeah, the liquor wouldn't start too late, yeah.
All right, so if you want to-
So there was a motion in second in order to separate these-
Right. So we'll vote on the, on the motion to-
Separate.
To separate. Then we'll vote on it. All right. Deborah, leave?
No, she's here.
Oh, okay. Ms. Roberts, on the motion to split?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Joe?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yeah.
And I'll vote yes. So that's five-oh to split.
We are, since we're voting on these separately, and the motion, I think, was made by Mr. McCrisky, I move to amend the common vicular license to start at seven AM, and to, to end by one P, uh, one AM.
I'll second the motion.
Call for the vote on that. Deborah?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
That's a, a vote. Next one, Steve?
Next is all alcohol and entertainment license. The motion was from eight AM until one AM.
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Gito?
No.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Yes. I vote yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
And Deborah?
Yes.
Four to one, so that passes. So you're all set.
Okay, thank you.
We thank you, and good luck.
Thanks.
And I'll try to come by and see you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You do have good food, by the way.
We're at being nine oh five. Selectmen time.
Yes.
Could the Pizonis approach the table, please? Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to reopen this hearing?
So made.
Second.
I got a, a motion from Mr. McCrisky, and a second from Mr. Gito. And in favor, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And me, five-zero. So that's a open. All right. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you.
State your name and-
Sure.
Tell us what you're going to do.
My name is Joseph Redoya. My entity is Super Slice Management, and I'm doing business as Pizonis. There was a Pizonis restaurant in Stoughton before I got the chance to come to this town, and I'm happy to bring the franchise back to the town. We are at the old Deeg's Diner on 1261 Park Street. We are open for business right now, with just takeout and delivery. And we're looking to have your approval for a common vic license. We are going to have approximately 25 to 30 seats. Originally, we thought there may be more, but with the space that we have in the building, we're probably going to be around the 25 range. Dining looks like, you know, it's fast casual, pizzas, salads, subs, and we're utilizing the drive-thru as well. We're happy to be in the town. This is my third restaurant under the Pizonis umbrella, and we've been successful in Dartmouth and in Rainham, so I'm hoping we can be successful here as well. Thank you.
I'll, I'll take the comments from the board right now, our questions, and I'll go to Mr. McCrisky first.
Sorry, would you need to read the reports?
Oh, yeah, hang on.
Sorry.
I have the reports from the checklist that was put together by the licensing group in town. We have the business contact information, the common vicular application, workers comp, affidavit of state taxes were paid. We have a floor plan that I looked at, and, and it, and it's, it's pretty black and white. And we have a copy of the lease, we have the advertising and the butt of notifications, and from our, our boards in town and departments, we have, the fire department has approved it, and police has approved with no concerns, Board of Health with the 30 seating as the maximum due to your septic system being, that's the most you can utilize it for, so you're right on the 25. Building and zoning approved, treasurer's office, no objections, and the water department has no objections. So we are all good on our checklist, and we did get the information from your, your grease trap handler, so that's, that's in place, and the Board of Health has approved that. So I just want everybody to know that. Okay. Joe, continue.
No, since we're doing restaurant reviews, want to welcome Pizonis back to Stoughton. And Buffalo, I mean, barbecue chicken pizza is awesome. It's not supposed to be like that, but it's awesome. And I had chicken parm sub a couple of weeks back, so here's my restaurant review on Pizonis. Welcome back, Joe, welcome back to Stoughton, Pizonis, and wish you great success in your new location.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberts, do you have anything to add?
No, then I'm in favor of this, and welcome back to the town. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gito?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Chairman Cavey?
Thank you. Once again, thank you for coming back to the town. I've missed you. Pizonis is especially good at reheating. It's, it's one of the few pizzas that you like, it's, it's as good, reheat it, as when you first get it. So I, I appreciate that very much. I do a lot of reheating. But anyway, I've got no questions. So the, other than, I know our Board of Health has mentioned that, I think the original request was, was for 32 seats. Given the, the, the way that sewer is handled out there, this would actually be-
Thirty.
There is no sewer, right? So, so-
No, there's no, it's on septic.
It's on septic, so, so they recommended no more than 30. And you're comfortable with that, that restriction?
Yeah, we're comfortable with that.
Okay, perfect. Then I have other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I can say that I visited it today. I got a, I got a sub, because I needed to get back to Oryc, but I, I'm a fan of the, the square pizza. That's, that's the one, that's, like you said, Stephen, that's the one you can reheat. I eat it cold, so. But I got to tell you, thank you for coming back.
Appreciate it.
And now I'll open it up to the public. Cynthia Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. Obviously, I could almost walk there. My family enjoyed Pizonis when it was closer. And I also, our end of town is kind of like a pizza desert. There's one choice. Now there'll be two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that have any more comments from the public? Anybody online?
There's nobody online with any comments.
Okay, I'll entertain a moment to close.
Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close the public hearing.
Deborah?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I'll entertain whatever motion the board wishes.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
I have a motion from Joe to approve.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. McCrisky, I mean from Mr. Gito. And I'll call for the vote. Deborah?
Yes.
I have a yes, Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So you're all set.
All right, thank you very much.
Go ahead, Jilda.
Yeah, the application as submitted had 32 seats. So we should revoke that to, to amend it to 30, no more than 30.
Well, basically, it's in because I read it into the fact that they will, they will not go, and he stated he probably risk at 25, we don't have to revoke that, that's in, under the context of the board's recommendation of the Board of Health.
Excuse me.
So you're, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, be well. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Scott, you're really good at this.
We have one more.
We have an application for a one-day alcoholic beverage license for May 5th, 2024, Besseco LLC, 837 Washington Street. Talking right into that, thank you. State your name and go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do, sir.
My name is Osman Salih. I'm the new owner of the VFW Post. In the spirit of food, I see a lot of food stuff been going on, we're also bringing you food soon, good Haitian food. I'm looking, I.
Let me see, never mind, we know their menus, what's yours gonna be? We're talking about menus tonight, so you're a little behind the eight ball now.
You guys are gonna feel like you're in the island every day, basically. And, yeah, so I'm obviously the proud owner of the new VFW Post. I run a few businesses, a construction business out of Randolph, home healthcare agency for seniors out of Avon and Malden, and this is my lifelong dream to own what I just bought. But anyways, I have a first communion, currently the place is closed cuz it's being reviewed by my architect, so we can try and bring a tester downtown to Stoughton instead of somebody going there. With that said, my niece's first communion is coming up, and I decided that, you know, since the place is just sitting there, I'm gonna use it to have the first communion, which would be a private party, not open to the public. So I'm looking to get a 24-hour liquor license for that purpose. I think that's it.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up to my board members to comment on this. Mr. McCrisky? Did you say a 24-hour liquor license?
A one-day liquor license.
One day, okay.
Just for one day, for that, for May 5th.
Yeah, cuz we can't give a 24-hour license, I just wanna make sure you know that. We just, just earlier, I read what we can give a license on the hours, okay, so just wanna make sure, clarify that.
Okay, basically, the liquor license would be from, I think, 9 till 1, till the maximum time allowed.
Right.
I think the party start at 8, between 8 and 9, not sure.
P.M.
P.M.
Okay.
It would be just for that one day.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna read some of the stuff that came from our department heads, just so that we'll get some ground clutter going here. From the building department, they recommend a denial cuz there's no current certificate of occupancy on the property. The police department has made a denial under the same stature, that there's no occupancy permit. And the Board of Health, the restrictions would be that the establishment is not licensed, therefore, it can only operate under the state potluck policy, which prohibits any retail sale of food or beverages since they have no oversight by the Board of Health or requirement to meet any food safety regulations to ensure public health and safety. They must post a sign on the site to advertise their guests to all above. We have from the fire department, they have no, no no any, no, no problems with it, they're gonna go for an approval. The treasurer's office, office has approved it, and water department has approved it also. The building department has, from Jack Erickson, there's some comments, there is no current CO, which is a certificate of occupancy, in the process, the property under Besseco LLC, the prior CO was under the VFW, which we all know. And I read that the police was against it in the Board of Health, so that's the concerns. If anybody else on the board has anything to say, I'll entertain.
May I?
A comment, the board's gonna talk, you can talk after, sir. Mr. Gito? Do you have anything, or I can let Mr. Cave go first?
I don't have anything more than what you read.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Mr. Cave, Vice Chair, Chairman?
That's okay, thank you very much, Mr. Carr. So I, I do have a couple of questions here, and I think what's being requested is a little bit different than what we have in our application. What we have is from 9 o'clock, I think, to 2 o'clock. And, and I think you understand that's, that's not tenable, but you're looking now for 9 o'clock to 1 o'clock.
When I was doing the application, I, I don't know if this is on, I wasn't sure what time to put on it, so I put the maximum time allowed, but we have no, no plan on being there before 8:00 P.M., and we have no plan on being there past 1 o'clock.
Okay, so that, so the license right now would have to be amended from 8:00 P.M. until 1:00, 1:00 a.m.?
Yes.
There's, there's a couple of open items here, as you've already heard, there's concerns about there being no occupancy permit. Did you have, are you in the process of getting one?
I didn't know was necessary until earlier tonight, and now that I know, I'll be downstairs the first, first thing tomorrow morning to take care of that. But the building is still as it was when, you know, the previous owners left, nothing has been changed.
And so that, I think you have here expected range of attendance to be 200 people. And so is that, without an occupancy permit, that's, that's a lot of people?
I expect between 100 and 150, quite honestly, and I'm just trying not to go, just for, not to limit myself, meaning I don't expect 200 people. And again, we plan, we do not plan on selling food there. I did reach to the, reach out to the police department to ask for detail, and I left a voicemail. I made multiple calls, nobody have gotten back to me yet.
And the, so the last concern is from the Board of Health, is, in my mind, it's, maybe the concern is not as significant in the sense that, that, you know, it's not a permit, but they have a, a request that if we approve it, it'd be with certain restrictions. And this has specifically to do with the fact that the establishment is not licensed by the Board of Health, and therefore can only operate under the state potluck, potluck policy, which prohibits any retail sale of food nor beverages since they have no oversight by the Board of Health, nor require to meet any food safety regulations to ensure public health and safety. They must post a sign onsite to advise their guests of all of the above.
A sign will be posted.
Okay. Okay, so the three, the three items here that I have as, as differing from what we have in the application package, one is the hours will be from 8:00 P.M. until 1:00 a.m. The second is that there will be an occupancy permit, so any, any approval would be contingent on there being this permit.
Yes, sir.
And that last, that you understand that, that without the Board of Health oversight, there's, there's, signs have to be put up to make sure that people are aware.
Yes, sir.
Of that, of that. So I'll, I'll just say that, that as I read through this, I felt that, that initially, without speaking to you, without understanding some of these changes, I felt that this was not a good idea. After talking to you and understanding some of the changes you're willing to, to, to make, I feel much more comfortable with it, so I just wanna tell you that I thank you for, for helping us work through this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberts, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Sorry, Ms. Roberts, you're on mute.
Because of the changes from what is written, I would just like confirmation from the owner if my understanding is correct, if it's accurate. So you wanted, you're the new owner of the, what we used to call the VFW. You're going, you're planning to open a Haitian restaurant, food service restaurant, but right now you're asking for a one-day license so you can celebrate the communion of one of your relatives, and it's going to start at 8:00 P.M. and end at 1:00 a.m. You're expecting around 100 to 150 people, and it's contingent on a permit. You're planning to get that, but let's say you do not get the permit, then what happens to your plan? Because it's just right around the corner, you know, to have, have an event such as this with that many people.
If I don't get the permit, basically, as far as, as far as liquor, or as far as the party going on?
Both, both, I'm just trying to get a better understanding, the full depth and breadth of what you're.
Well, if, if I don't get the permit, I will definitely abide by what the town bylaws are. If, if, if the party's not allowed, then I won't have a party. If it's allowed, I hope that it is, we'll have a party. And if we don't, if, if the party's allowed without liquor, then people will eat food, basically, so. At this point, it's kinda too late to probably find a venue, but it would be a bummer for this little girl. But yes, and the plan is, like, right now, like I said, the place is closed, I closed it, and we, we designing everything, and we're gonna be on the construction, the building permit is gonna be, we're gonna apply for building permit, new licensing for different things, and we'll reopen probably back in July or August, depends. Yeah, but I don't know what the, as I'm speaking to you, I don't know what the town bylaws are on, on that. So whatever that is, we'll abide by it.
Okay, I, I think I have a better understanding now, thank you so much. I'm all set.
Thank you, Deborah. Now I'm, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions and make a couple of comments. In order to have this one-day alcohol license, you gotta have people that are certified to handle the liquor.
I am.
Your tip certified?
Yes, sir, my certificate is here, would you like to see it?
And then, we have no details over what the officers are gonna, the chief is gonna require for details, so that's kinda up in the air. I know, I know you said you've checked into it, but as long, if I don't have it here, I'm not gonna speculate on it, I'm not gonna take anybody's word that, oh, well, it'll happen. It's, it's gotta be on paper so that we know it all happened. Then I, I got a, just a, a little question to ask, that is this a communion party?
It's a first communion.
You're talking a 10-year-old kid?
Yes.
Up till 1:00 in the morning?
I don't.
Partying?
Well, you have to understand Haitian culture, communion is a big deal for us.
Yeah, it's a big deal for me, too.
Okay, so it's an evening party. I said 1:00, I don't want, I wouldn't wanna be in a situation where the police department or somebody shows up and say, oh, what are you guys still doing here, kinda thing? I honestly, I just bought the building, I'm still in the process of learning everything about the town. This is a major investment for me, so I would not do anything that would jeopardize that investment. So if the party needs to be, again, I'm saying, whatever the bylaw is, that's what it will be. But as far as us Haitian, communion is a big deal. It's really, I don't know why it's kids, it's really a growing up party.
I have to treat this as I would treat everything else. Normally, if we don't have a COC, we wouldn't even entertain it, because that's a serious thing. We approve this, and the COC doesn't come in, and this party goes off, and something happens, we're the ones who are liable up here, as much as you are, because we would license you for that one day. So, that's, that's all I have to say. So I'm not, I'm not saying anything yet, I'm just saying that, and I've heard you, and now I'm gonna open up to the, to the public if they have anything to say, and then I'll come back to you. So if there's anybody in the public who would like to say, that's sitting here, that would have a comment, I'll, I'll entertain it. Hearing none, I'll take your statement again.
As far as the COC you're referring to, again, I'm a, I'm a licensed general contractor by trade. It wasn't oversight, I spoke to the young lady, the lady downstairs, she was very nice in helping me figure this out, and I'm sure it's, it shouldn't be any problem to take care of that, cuz we have not made any changes to the building, as far as use group, fire, fire alarm equipment, nothing has been changed, it's still in its current state. Actually, I had the chance to speak to Joe, and nothing has been changed in the building, it was being used. But right now, I mean, we haven't done any construction, so I could not imagine why they wouldn't approve it under its current state, cuz it was operating.
Let me ask you a question, the fire extinguishers and all that stuff that's in there, are they licensed to you now? Or are they still in the, the former owner's names?
They are currently mine, the company contacted me to keep, to continue the maintenance contract, the security contract, every contract that the VFW have with different veterans and stuff, I still keep them in place, and I'm currently, I already issued different checks to different people.
Okay, that's key. All right. Where this is just a an application, if, if the board has no more comments or questions of the applicant, I'll entertain if somebody wants to make a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we approve the license with the following changes. First, that the hours of operation be from 8:00 P.M. to 1:00 a.m. That signs be posted relating the information that the Board of Health communicated in their, in their comments. And third, that this license be contingent upon the approval, the, the acceptance of an occupancy permit.
Second.
Is there any, any more discussion on the motion?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Mr. Town Manager, sir, Tom?
Would you, do you wanna amend that, would you consider an amendment that we, and I'll be, I'll be of assistance to you on this, in closing the issue on the police details? I'll make sure they do return that phone call tomorrow. I'll make sure they do return that phone call tomorrow. But do we need one or two? That has to be worked out.
So I'll, yeah, I'll make the, amend the motion to also include a, the, the following of the recommendation of the Police Department regarding police details.
Question. Assuming the Police Department is not able to provide detail, would a private security company be an option?
Mr. Chairman? I'll close that loop with you tomorrow. I'm sure there'll be a lower comedy request for a detail. We just want to make sure it's nailed down before...
Thank you.
It's scheduled. That's all.
So, so it was my motion and I made the amendment. But Mr. McCrisky, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'd ask the gentleman, Mr. Chairman, if, if when he comes up tomorrow to deal with the certificate of occupancy, that you come upstairs with me and we'll call the Police Department together.
Thank you.
The chief is out of town and we're short a deputy. So I'll make sure we close that communication gap.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have, Mr. Gito, go ahead, sir.
If he had a home in Stoughton with a big barn, he could have the party without a license. I ordinarily, quite frankly, would not likely vote in favor of this. But I think with the, with the discussion that we've had, with the, the idea of making sure that, that the people within the building and outside would be protected, I think the only thing that, that we need to worry about is whether or not someone gets hurt in there and whether, whether the town is in jeopardy for that to occur or not, as well as the, as the applicant. I, I think in this particular case, as explained, I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Okay.
I might not in other situations, however.
Right.
We won't hold you to it.
All right, I'll take the vote now. Ms. Roberts? Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Chairman Cave?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
And I vote no. So it's four to one. It passes. You have your license.
Thank you, but I don't know if I'm still on. I didn't want to say this before the vote. So this seems like I was trying to bribe you guys. But I heard your comments earlier regarding trash pickup. As a new business owner, I wasn't aware of the initiative. We are prepared to make a donation of $2,000 to the town. Okay? So I will have a check for you guys tomorrow.
It's very kind of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That would have only been a problem if you made that offer before the vote. Thank you. Very generous.
That was very generous. Thank you very much, sir. Excellent. So I'm going to take this gavel back here. Mr. Vice Chair, thank you so much for leading us through those, those public hearings. I genuinely appreciate it. And I will entertain, we've accomplished all the tasks for today. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, have we addressed Paul's issue?
I'm sorry?
Have we addressed Paul's issue?
Yeah, that was the extended agenda.
Thank you, sir.
I thought you were just staying here because you liked us.
Oh, no, not me.
Yeah, got approved. It was like the, the second thing we did. I'm sorry. Sorry, man. I'm sorry. Sure. Of course.
Paul, sure.
My wife's like, you're not on TV yet.
I saw what you were doing. You were going live. You had it on there.
Yeah. No, I just, thank you for approving it. Thank you for approving it. I had no clue you guys had approved it. So maybe I was, I was watching the, keeping an eye on the score for the Bruins and the Saltics back there. Saltics lost, Bruins are winning 3 to 2 in the third. Saltics lost. They lost by 10. But what are you gonna do? I just wanted to invite you guys also for the procession on Sunday, the 23rd. It's just one way. It's from the MacLaconception Church to back to the club, San John's Club. Should be a great, I'm hoping for great weather on Saturday, especially because that's when we're gonna have the festival outside. I have a band coming from Canada, a live band coming from Canada, who's a popular band, Starlight. So I'm hoping to have a good crowd and I'm hoping to see you guys there with us and dancing and drinking and eating steak tips and fried dough and all that stuff. So that's it. But I do want to commend all you guys for the work you guys do and the staff, too, getting the applications in. Between Sean Leahy, I believe, Kelly, they've all been terrific. So everybody I've dealt with, Jilda is also terrific. Everybody's terrific. So I appreciate the, the work you guys do.
Thank you, Paul.
That's it. Thank you so much. And thank you for the work you do as well.
Mr. Chair, before Paul leaves, I'd be remiss. I've said it to him many times, personally, face to face. My wife refers to me, and Paul will appreciate it, Jilda will, she refers to me as the mutt because I'm only half Portuguese, but my mother, grandparents are full-blood. But want to thank Paul in a time where it's very difficult to get people to do work for processions and, and the feast and keeping the clubs active. Paul, I've said it to you personally. I want to personally thank you and for a lot of the people in the town, you know, that comes to the feast as well, for keeping the tradition alive, for keeping everybody working together and really, you know, making a difference in Stoughton and everything you do and the people around you. That's attributable to you because it's tough to get people to volunteer, but they're, they're supporting you in that, in your ability, you know, to bring people together. So my hat's off to you. And, you know, you should look in the mirror and say, job well done, because it is. Thank you so much.
I appreciate the words. And as I always say, I mean, we can't do it alone. We need a leader.
Right.
That's for sure.
That's right.
And that's, and I do good at leading and supervising. But I have a great, great committee. I have people that are not even in the committee that I ask for help and they're always willing to come help me at the feast. We just made over 22,000 cookies the other day to sell and we did well. So it's just, we have a great team with, you know, the effort is tremendous that they do to help me out and help the club out. Because like you said, it ain't easy to get people to work. So I'll volunteer. So I'll volunteer. It's not easy to get people to work for free. We all know that. And, you know, and it's not one day. It's, I mean, I've been there six straight years at the club and I had done, back in 2009 and 2010, I was president there. Took a break, came back. But, you know, we survived through COVID. We did. And that was the, that was a tough, tough thing because we were closed, as like many other clubs and bars and all restaurants and all that stuff. But we survived. We used our heads. You know, we worked together. We volunteered. We did some stuff that we could, you know, to raise some funds. But, you know, I appreciate the kind words, but hats off to my board of directors and also the community of Stoughton because I post, I'm one to post a lot on Facebook for advertisement. And the community shows up. They go to the feast, they buy cookies, they fry dough, anything we have. It's, it's great. So hats off to everybody. Thank you.
Job well done.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, and have a good night.
You, too, Paul. Take care.
Thank you so much. Bye, Deb.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Okay, I know there's no debate for a motion to adjourn, but I just want to, I just want to quickly thank the members of the board for accommodating the change in schedule and also for the town manager and for all of the applicants. So there's a motion to adjourn by Mr. Gito, seconded by Mr. McCrisky. Oh, sorry. And of course, Jilda, Jilda, who's done an amazing job helping us navigate these, these, these waters. And she's helped me, she's corrected many of my mistakes and it's only been a week. So, so thank you very much for all...
For all of my recommendations.
So thank you, thank you all for that. So there's a motion by Mr. Gito, seconded by Mr. McCrisky. So Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Our next meeting will be May 7. Thank you all very much and I'll see you then. Be well.
Bye-bye.